Okay, we'll call this meeting to order Wednesday, September sixth, work session, seven P. M. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open it up for visitor comments. Please keep your statements to five minutes. Any, anybody? So state your name and then, then tell us what you're here for.
Can you turn the mic on, please? There's a round button.
There we go.
What was your name again?
Richard Mason. Okay, um, I'm here to talk about the transient boater situation at the city docks here in St. Helens. I've been a resident here since two thousand and five. I've been involved with the boating community for over twenty years. And I've seen a decline in participation or decline in the number of boaters that are coming to our city, simply because there's not enough spaces that are, spaces are taken by these transient people. And I've, I live within a visual, I can see the city docks from, from my house. And I see the illicit activities that are going on down there. I, I go for walks and I can see the illicit activities that are going on. And the, uh, back, starting in two thousand and fourteen, I started sending emails to Sue because I was told that she was the one who took the complaints or whatever. And, um, uh, I would watch and I would see that there are boats down there for, for, that are in, in violation of the, of the seventy-two hour limit or that they're in violation of the, I think it's either two or four hour limit for an unattended boat. They basically are using the city docks for free mortgage. Okay, the, um, the people that are living on their boats are staying there well beyond their seventy-two hour limit. For example, there's a boat that's been down there now for over two weeks. And he's also plugged into the, to the, um, power grid that the city offers to the Christmas ships, which is free. Okay, he's not plugged into the, um, to the power stations. And, um, they're, basically, I've, like I said, it's, it's, it's not fair to the, to the, to the law-abiding boating community. Okay? And I, I don't want to see what happened to the River Place Marina happen to the docks here at St. Helens. And that's, that's basically what I got to say, so, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's John Wakert. I'm a St. Helens resident. And I moor right there at Yachts Landing, right next to the city docks. And I'll just back up Rich over the three years that we've moored there. We've, I have called, uh, Chief Moss several times on the phone because there's been fights down there from these boaters arguing about somebody stole something from their boat. There's been confrontations with the public down there. I've watched this as we sit on the back of our boat. And it's a regular basis. It continues every weekend. It's just not something that happens every once in a while. So I don't know what can be done about it. You guys have, uh, you have laws on the books. You have an ordinance that's been written and it's there. It does have teeth in it. It just needs to be enforced. I've read through it. You can confiscate boats. It's written in there. You can do that. I mean, it's a process and it's work. Yes, I agree. But something has to be done. This evening, there's five boats down there that shouldn't be there. There are three boats tied up unattended that shouldn't be there. There's free showers, free bathroom, free water. They know how to get into the water down there. I have watched them take the drain off down under the dock, fill up their five gallon buckets, take it back to their boats. I have pictures of them doing that. I've watched them do drugs off the back of their boats. It's a regular basis, so, uh, and just so you know who I am, Andy can address this more. I am a member of Columbia River Yachting Association Board Member. I do the cruise schedule. I'm sure you guys have seen the little cruise schedule around town, all the boats clubs that come down there. I organize that. Last year, I had two clubs cancel coming down here because of this problem. And one of them was Columbia River Yacht Club, the biggest club in Portland. Probably lost close to maybe ten thousand dollars possible revenue for your merchants down here for the weekend. So it's having a direct reflection on what's going on. So, again, I hope something can be done. I know the sheriff and the county's been down there. They just put tickets out and they throw them in the water and off they go. So I've seen it several times. So thank you for your time. I'll let Andy address the, that side of it and hopefully maybe we can work together in the future, try to get something going. I don't know. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Hi, my name is Andy Meyer. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Columbia River Yachting Association. I represent nineteen yacht clubs in the area and approximately two thousand members. I got a call from, actually I got an email from the Oregon State Marine Board a couple of weeks ago saying that Columbia County Commissioner, I don't know if I seen his name right, Hamler? Asking why clubs aren't coming to Colum-, to Sand Island and St. Helens docks. And the Marine Board got ahold of me and other people and asked the same question. And, you know, you've got a really great destination here. St. Helens is a great place to come and we love coming here. My club had a cruise here this last weekend and I spoke to store owners here in town and Brad down at the, and restaurant owners and Brad down at the marina. And they all expressed concern about the decline in the boat clubs coming here. And they also said there's a big problem at the dock and it's the transient boaters that are, that they think are causing, you know, clubs from not coming. And, um, John just mentioned Columbia River Yacht Club. We had the same problem at River Place for several years in downtown Portland. And, um, the city finally hired on a contract, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Department, to patrol and it gave them jurisdiction to enforce their ordinances there. They did that for two years and it really helped. Now, they had a lot of pressure from the people from the condos up above and everything. That wasn't just our organization. But they cleaned up River Place. At least it is up till now. And now the Multnomah County Sheriff doesn't have that contract anymore, so we'll see what happens. But, um, I've been attending the transient boater task force for about three years and that's run by the Department of State Lands. And they have a meeting downtown at the City Hall every two months. And, um, things have been going on and they are making progress. It's slow, but it's happening. And I suggest that if you want to claim your docks back, maybe get ahold of, and I can help you with this. Get ahold of the DSL and, because they're inventing the wheel now. They are doing things that are getting people off the, at that, at their places. They're the city park docks. And the Multnomah County Sheriff, uh, they have expertise on how to, you know, how to do this and they can maybe assist you in that respect too. In maybe making a contract with the local county sheriff here and having them patrol the docks for you. They have, they're using the limited duration and trespass rules that, uh, that DSL is enforcing. If something isn't done pretty soon, I predict that there's going to be less clubs coming because the clubs don't want to see what John just mentioned and they don't want to fight that. They'll go someplace else. And I don't want to see that happen to your town. This is a great town. Like I said, I enjoy coming here. The other problem that we had this weekend, which I don't know if you're familiar with or not, but you know, if you've put a lot of money into this new power system on the dock and it's a great system when it works. Well, it went down Saturday afternoon at two o'clock and it shut down all of A Dock. So nobody got power, even though, so some people, I paid for two days, I got one. One of my friends in our club got, paid for three days, they got one. And so something needs to be done about that. You don't need that reputation, getting out to the yacht clubs that you've got this power system that doesn't work. I don't know, I mean, it's a state-of-the-art system, but something needs to be done. You need a, maybe a phone number down there that you can call. We can call somebody and somebody will come down and turn it back on or something because that's very disconcerting. I know you've got that big panel open, but not everybody has a hundred and fifty feet of cord to run from their boat to that big panel. The transients do, but some of us don't. So that could help with the attendance problem as well. The city of St. Helens wants boaters to continue to come and eat and shop here. We need to get these problems corrected and I really hope you guys can, can help us with this. I'm willing to help with contacts or whatever you would like me to do. Give me a call. I'd be happy to help you whenever I can and with names or whatever. And thank you for your time.
Andy, did you sign in with your email and your contact information?
Yes.
Thank you.
Andy, and one last question. You said the, right here, Mayor Scholl, right here.
Sorry, who's talking?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
So you said it was the Department Land Services, is that right?
Department of State Lands.
State Lands?
Yeah, I have, I have
The DSL?
Contact person right here on my paperwork. I could leave it with somebody if you'd like.
Yes, I would like that, yeah. Because we have a huge problem here. We understand that. We have, not only do we have it on our docks, but we have it going up the slough where they're actually brought three boats over, left them, two of them sank. You know there was fuel on them. There's still, I think, one's floating that's still sitting there.
One sunk out there right now.
That's the one that's remaining. There's actually two underwater right now.
Oh, really?
Yes, there was three pulled over at once. I'm an avid fisherman of this area. I'm out on that river a lot. I do see it. We are actively code enforcement, has been active down there. It sounds like we have maybe a little bit more legal grounds we could take by yanking boats, which is really expensive. I mean, these guys are buying these five hundred thousand dollar boats, these transients, for nothing.
For nothing.
Yes, and then, and then living for nothing.
Another thing is that, that you may or may not be aware of, is the Marine Board gets a biannual sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get rid of these boats.
Oh, really?
For the whole state, for the whole state.
Okay.
Okay, now, to pull something like that out of the water costs a lot of money.
It does.
Pulling them off the dock.
Not so much.
And then getting rid of them doesn't cost near as much. And so Rachel down at Marine Board would be somebody you might want to talk to. So that you've got three sources there. You've got the, the Marine Board, you've got DSL, and you've got the Multnomah County Sheriff's Patrol that have done some of this. So, I mean, there's three sources you could work with right there.
Yes, and County Commissioner, Heimler, we're going to go actually have another talk with him because we don't have actually a boat. The city of St. Helens does not have a boat. We, we rely on the county to shuttle us to the island because, yep, yep.
I understand that. Again, if you want, you can get ahold of me. I'll help you wherever I can. We want to see St. Helens back the way it used to be.
We all do. I've talked to Tony and Brad both down at St. Helens Marina, you know. And I know a lot of people with yachts and fishing boats. And I actually was a victim. Actually, somebody realized it was my boat they were coming out of. Somebody was walking away with about a two hundred and fifty dollar rod and reel and they were going up the ramp and they said, "What are you doing? That's my grandpa's boat." Wrong answer. Put it back, is what, was the guy caretaker for Brad. And I said, "If that ever happens again in the future, I will press charges."
I got, if I get another minute, I can tell you something happened this weekend.
Yep, we need to have one more minute.
Okay, um, my neighbor who moors, he's got his boat here now. He's got a tally craft, but it's on this side of the dock and not that side. He's a fisherman. He went out fishing on his tally and when he came back, his dock cord was gone. He left it on, on the, on the dock. And, um, he started looking around. There was a sailboat behind him. And he said, "Do you know what happened to my dock cord?" And he says, "Well, yeah, I took it. You left it on a public dock." "Hey, it's mine now." So Mark called the city police and they came down, the sergeant and two other guys came down and got his dock cord back and he didn't press charges, but that happened this Friday, last Friday.
Yeah, we're, we're calling them pirates out there, just so you know.
Just long as you gentlemen know that we did talk about this in our work session today. It was in my report. And, uh, yeah, I've been a victim just like Rick has. Probably a five hundred dollar canvas on the back of my boat. Broke into the locker, took it. I'm a longtime y- yatter as well. A member of P Y C and St. Helens Selling Club now. So I know, we realize the problem. We're looking at, we're trying everything we can. Neil, you might want to break in here too because you were part of the-
Sue and, uh, Ontario are both gone tonight, but I just wanted to let these gentlemen know that, you know, we've realized it's a very frustrating problem and we were frustrated too. The electrical problem's been very frustrating for us. We put a lot of money into it. We've had two different electrical companies come and evaluate it. And they both say that because of code, those breakers are so sensitive that if a boat comes in there and they're not wired right, they throw the breakers. So the biggest issue is the, some of the boats that come in aren't, aren't wired right. And, you know, and we can't change the code, so we can't change the breakers in there. So it's a frustrating problem for us too. I just wanted to let you also know that Terry Moss, Chief Moss, changed the code enforcement working hours. So he now works Wednesdays through Saturdays. Because part of our problem is we have the Parks Department go down there and take licenses through the week, but by the end of the week, it's five days. So the day that they're violating is really on a Saturday or Sunday. So Chief Moss has changed the code enforcement working hour so he can go down and check them on Saturday. So hopefully that'll help, um, you know, catch some of these people that are down there too long. And it's frustrating for us too because there's some boats down there that aren't even licensed. Our code enforcement operator can't, our code enforcement officer can't enforce those rules. It's the Marine Patrol that has to enforce those rules, so.
That's why.
That'd be good to have. But anyway, I understand your frustration and we're frustrated too. But we're, we're trying to resolve some of it.
And we have installed coin op showers and that has helped a tremendous amount. You know, so no longer free showers. At least they've got to put a quarter, a couple of quarters in and got a time limit on it.
And unfortunately-
Right.
We actually did respond this weekend. Yeah, we had Paul with the Parks Department that takes care of the docks. I got, I was on call this weekend, so we did have him come down and he reset some of it. But they just trip out again if the boats, you know, the same boat has the same problem. He just trips the whole circuit again. Yeah, so it's frustrating. But we did, we did respond this weekend, just so you know, yeah. He said he talked to several different boaters, but I don't know exactly who he talked to, but he called me back and told me what the problem was.
Andy, we'd definitely like to, to be able to help out though in any way we can, so we'll be reaching out to you and, and, uh,
And just, if you want a number, it's five oh three, three nine seven. Here, I'll, I'll write it down for you and get it to you. It's, it's the non-emergency number for CCOM and they call the on-call person.
Yeah, I might, might add on that, uh, sharing some of these frustrations and looking for, for solutions that, uh, I've reached out to the Marine Board and DSL and I have good, a pretty good understanding of what's been successful at Marine Place and, we're trying to get there. We need, need the right tools. We do have a pretty good set of tools. It really boils down to enforcement. But, you know, not having the marine- Yeah, I did make a note of that, so thank you. Thank you for that.
Yep, yep, yep. And we're just getting the trifle right now. You're right.
And I did, I did, uh, it's probably been a month ago, call about the boats that the mayor was talking about out here in the channel. Marine Patrol did come out and they reported back to our St. Helens Police that the state police were handling them. So I'm not sure how that all works. But they said the state police were the ones that were dealing with all those.
Transit, uh, boater task force, is that under the jurisdiction of the DSL or is that? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other visitor comments? Good, good. Will you state your name and, and you're on camera, you're live, so.
Not a problem. My name's Susan Baker and I'm coming to represent a couple of the businesses in town. We would like a little more information before you start talking about the soda tax, where the money's going to go, et cetera. We're not sure exactly what this is entailing. We're getting information from vendors like Pepsi and Coca-Cola versus what we see in the paper and stuff. And it would be really nice if you guys could give us a little more information on what you're thinking with it so then we can have a better idea of what we need to ask when you're going to put it before your, the council.
We have a public forum scheduled. What date?
October fourth. October fourth?
October fourth.
Daytime or nighttime?
Nighttime.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
I won't be there.
You won't be there, huh? Are you taking a vacation or something?
Nope.
So six o'clock on October fourth. I will spread the word. Thank you very much and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Could I have you re-stated because you weren't in the mic yet?
Okay, yeah, Leah Tulletson, and my husband and I own the Columbia Theater. And so, and I also want to talk just for a second about the soda tax. We're pretty concerned about it. Soda is obviously a big portion of our income that comes in. And of course, my competition is in Scappus, who isn't going to have the soda tax. And so I kind of, ju- just for an example to let you guys know, I did my numbers from last month, which was a very slow movie month. It just like, nothing came out and it was a slow month. But I skinned by at break even last month in a summer month. And I figured my, my supplier, Food Services of America, had sent me a note saying, "Hey, this is what this tax is going to cost you." And it comes out to about a thousand dollars a month for me. So like for last month, instead of breaking even, where basically I worked almost every day, it would have cost me a thousand dollars to be in business. And, um, like many of you guys know, because you come in and stuff, we do have another theater that kind of helps support when this theater's slow. But when you add twelve thousand dollars of weight onto that, I don't know if we can make it. So it's, this isn't a, this is a really big deal to us and it's a big deal to the theater, which I feel like does good. Like, that's our effort for it to do good in this town and we love this town. So this is something that is not small for us at all. A thousand dollars a month for us is a lot. On these months that, like I said, I worked almost every day and that's because that's how we broke even. So, um, I don't know. I mean, I know you guys have, you've talked about two cents an ounce, which sounds like so little. Which sounds like so little, but the problem is, is that, and I know you guys have come in before, we do like our super combo. It's got refills on it and it's got two forty-four ounces. So for ten fifty right now, you get a super combo. If I'm going to add a tax to that, it would be between three and four dollars, depending on if they get ice and a refill. That's a huge markup. I would never be able to pass that along. I, I for sure will have to be eating that price to be able to sell a super combo. So I, I've read in the paper, you know, that you've mentioned that you don't think it'll hurt businesses hardly at all. But, and I don't know about other businesses because I don't know what portion of soda, what it is to them. But to us, it, it could be the difference of an antique Mallory Theater. Like, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that as a threat or anything else. I'm just saying I did my numbers last month and they are what they are. So, um, and I'm sure you guys have realized that when you come in and there's five other people in there. Do you know, because I've seen lots of you guys come in. So, anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate you considering that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitor comment? Okay. Approval authorized for signature. A, agreement with Inflow Communications for maintenance of short-tail telephone systems. B, contract payments.
Move we approve and authorize for signature for A and B as read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve for A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Appointments to city boards and commissions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. To Arts and Cultural. We have two appointments that are, okay, I would, Latisha Sisson and Janet Anderson. So I would like to move that we appoint these two to Arts and Cultural.
Second. Do they have, uh, do they have experience or are they new or what?
They're new. And we have a reappointment also of Jen Farrington. She's, she served a partial term and would like to continue. Should that have been contained in the motion?
Yes, can you, you, do you want to amend that, uh, motion then?
I would like to move that we accept all three of these people.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve all three to the Boards of Arts Commission, Arts and Cultural Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Any, anything else? Any other appointments? Hearing none, okay. Consent agenda for acceptance. A, Arts and Cultural Commission minutes dated April twenty-fifth, May twenty-third, and June twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. B, Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission minutes dated February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen.
Move we accept the consent agenda six A and B?
Second.
No, 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 we're on six. We're on, uh, Consent Agenda six. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda A and B six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Consent Agenda for approval. Council Work Session Regular Minutes dated August sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. B, Exclusive Use Permit. C, Accounts Payable Bill List.
Move we approve Consent Agenda seven, A through C as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve A through C as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I, I have just a statement I'd like to read and that's all. Okay, I, I have just a statement I'd like to read, and that's all I have to report on. "I was elected to represent my community. I talk to people on a daily basis on the streets and in the businesses throughout the community and, in their homes. My campaign promise was to represent the citizens fairly and most of all, honestly. I would like my fellow citizens, I like my fellow citizens, was and, and am tired of politicians who tell us what to, what they think we want, and in turn, act on their own agendas without regard to citizen input or their own campaign promises. We are currently planning a forum on sugary tax drinks. Um, I have spent hours talking to business owners and citizens who are dead-set against this form of taxation. It will be a burden to business owners and increase expense to our citizens. It will most certainly drive our citizens to shop in other communities at the expense of our grocery stores in St. Helens. Is that a desirable outcome? There are only eight cities in the United States currently have this form of tax, and every one of these were put into place by municipal codes. Citizen's input was ignored and the code was put into place by governing bodies. You can, you can call that a tax based on health issues, but it's a kind of health issue that is a personal decision, not a government, government decision based on unapproved science. The cost of this forum is unnecessary expense wasted on a foreseeable negative outcome. Why even waste staff time and city funds on a forum which is already seen by our citizens as governmental outreach? We founded this country because of taxation without representation, and we as a city council are hell-bent on doing exactly that."
May I respond to that?
Nope.
Using your words, yes, I can.
You can, you can, you can comment on your report, Counselor Morton.
I don't have anything to report on, uh, tonight, but, I mean, today was a pretty busy day, and I think my report was pretty much, you know, pointed at the, at the yachting problem that we have, and it was reinforced tonight. So, I really appreciate those fellows stepping forward and saying that, reminding it that there is a problem in our community.
Yep. Okay, Counselor Cohen?
Um, I don't have anything to report this evening, I would like to say that I agree with you, that we were elected to represent the community. I agree with you that we need to take into consideration citizen input, that those are the people that guide us. And that's why this forum was planned, so that we can listen to those in the community that still want to talk to us about it. So, I support the forum. I don't think it's a waste of time.
Okay. Counselor Carlson?
I think I said everything I needed to say earlier. I've got nothing.
Counselor Locke?
This is for Neil. So, we've had electricians look at this, whatever, cabal go down on our docks that we've spent time and money in. Several years now, it hasn't worked hardly at all. And the issue is a ground fault, breakers, right? And you say, and it's because it's on the entire system? Is that still true?
Well, they've tried some individual ones also, to see if that made any difference, and it didn't.
So, when one GFI goes out, the entire line goes out on that circuit?
Not necessarily, sometimes just the one goes out, and sometimes depends, I guess, on how much the load is, whether it takes out the whole, whole line or not.
And do the otters have a, uh, access to the GFI reset?
Not, not once, when it's in the breaker box itself, they, so they would have.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if it's on the docks themselves, if they would be able to reset it, but they'll just blow it again. We tried it on a couple boats when they were down there before.
Is there a way of determining which boats don't meet code?
Um, I guess there is if it keeps blowing, but sometimes it's more, it's not necessarily that they're wired wrong, that they're trying to run a microwave, an air conditioner, and a whole bunch of things on the same, same deal also.
Are they, are they on twenty amp or thirty amp or fifty amp, or do you know?
I believe twenty, but I'm not positive.
They'll kick.
Yeah. And, but I've been told from a lot of the builders that even they're having this issue in the house.
Yes.
In the housing industry, because the codes have got so strict on those breakers that as soon as they get approved by building code, that people go in and change their household deals too, because they break so easy, so.
I know, with a twenty amp, with twenty amps, uh, there are some vacuum cleaners that will kick the, uh, with, the electric motor will kick the, uh, GFI. And if the GFI is on a circuit, then all those plugs go bad until that's reset.
Yeah, we've talked to the city of the Dows who had kind of the same, same situation, and they, they say they have the same exact problem.
No solution, though?
Uh, not that we've came up with yet. Last I knew, that Sue was gonna contact the Marine Board to see who else has the same type of circuits besides us, besides the Dows possibly, that we could talk to and see if they came up with any, you know, any answers.
Sounds like a headache to me.
It is, it's terrible, it's frustrating.
So, like, I guess, I mean, either we need to resolve the issue or remove them, because...
Well, that's why we basically, that's why we've been basically opening the panel about every weekend that we knew was gonna have a, a big, you know, a lot of people down there, because we, you know, we could go down there twenty times a weekend and keep resetting stuff.
Are we setting ourselves up for liability with the panel open?
Um, my understanding, we talked to the electrician a little bit about that, Hamer Electrician, who's done marinas all over the country, down in the Bay Area and everything else, and he said, "This panel was grandfathered because, when this panel was put in," because I asked him that question, "Well, why don't these breakers break?" Well, he said, "Because those were under the old code, and so they're grandfathered in, so they don't break, because it doesn't take as much, you know, problems to break those breakers, so they work." But, we can't go in and change the new ones to that, that type, because it violates the code.
Could it, could it be a default? Could it be their, has their electrician already replaced them once?
Yeah, he's replaced some of them, he's tried different ones that are, that meet the code, and they still, they still go.
Good luck.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
Lot of time and effort trying to make that work right.
Mm-hmm.
Lies with the code, but it still doesn't work.
Right, it's about what it is.
Counselor Locke, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I think we're going to department reports, you wanna start with John? Let's start with John, let's go backwards.
Go backwards.
Because I can.
Um, it was good to hear from the bo- members of the boating community, and, and, you know, we, we're taking those complaints seriously. It's a lot of attention, the boating community means a lot now, has in the past, and it certainly has the opportunity in the future. So, we're trying to find ways to, uh, make the experience here a good one, and, uh, the, the net, Halloween's proving to be bigger than, better than ever, and, uh, look forward to November first.
Yep. All right, Kathy? Nothing? Matt? Nothing? Margaret?
I had one thing I wanted to mention, uh, that I neglected to say at the work session. And that is that, um, two of our library board members have decided that we need a book club. And so, they are going to, uh, launch a quarterly book club at the library. And they decided that, um, they're going to, uh, have people read a book about a, around a theme, rather than trying to get multiple copies of the same book, because that's kind of a hardship for a small library like ours to buy that many copies of the same thing. So, they've decided to launch in October, and they know it's a short notice, so they're encouraging people, if they want to go back and read a favorite, that, or present a favorite that they've already read, that's fine, but the theme is going to be a Halloween theme. So, they're asking people to read a mystery that has a Halloween twist, something with ghosts or vampires or something, uh, along that line. And then, uh, on October nineteenth, um, it's a Thursday, I believe it's seven, they've decided to meet in the library, and you can, um, bring your book and share with other, uh, members. If you need help selecting a book, the library has a, a group that's available for you to, um, peruse and choose one from, or otherwise, you can bring one of your own. And so, they're gonna give this a whirl and, um, announce the next selection or next theme for, um, their next quarter, when we meet in October. So, this is an exciting group, uh, the, the library board that we have is very active and very involved, and they just came to us and said, "Can we do this?" And we said, "Great, that sounds wonderful." So, that's our Ha- one of our Halloween town contributions over at the library.
Nice.
Reading spooky stories.
Thank you, Margaret. Neil? Neil has nothing. Okay. We're adjourned.